A meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. I mean, Peters. City of Milpitas Planning Commission Meeting. And like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I would Commissioner Albana lead us in that in the in the pledge. Commissioner Albana, are you able to hear me? Or is your out?
Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you, Commissioner Albana. And then would the Recording Secretary take the roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, Chair, Commissioners and staff. I'm going to take attendance, starting with Commissioner Oblaza. Commissioner Albana.
Here.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Alcorn.
Here.
Commissioner Belong.
Present.
Commissioner Chua.
Here.
Commissioner Chuon.
Here.
Chair Tao.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on the next item, it's the Conflict of Interest Declaration. Would the City Attorney pull the Commissioners, please?
Yes. Ask whether any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest on any items before you tonight?
None.
Okay, seeing none, let the record reflect none to that question.
Thank you, City Attorney, appreciate it. And approval of the agenda. And before we get get to it, I would like to, as the Chair, ask for the allowance for to allow for a two-minute, a quick recess between the second and third public item this evening. Since this is a rather warm evening, just want to make sure everyone is stay hydrated and whatnot. So we'll just take a two-minute, a quick recess at that point. Is there any any concerns on that item?
Does that require a motion?
No motion.
Okay.
Okay. So for the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion? Any changes?
Motion to approve the agenda for May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Do I have a second?
Wasn't there a change on the current posted agenda?
It's actually listed on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's reflected. Okay, a second.
Okay, all in favor, I'll do the do the roll call here. Vice Chair.
Aye.
Commissioner Chua.
Aye.
Commissioner Chuon.
Aye.
Commissioner Oblaza. Still not here, okay. Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Okay, and Chair's Chair's eye as well, so with six, six eyes and one, one not present. And next agenda item, announcements, Commissioners. Any Commissioners have an announcement? I'll just go ahead, go go down the go down the row. Vice Chair, any announcements?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chua. Any announcement?
None, thank you, sir, thank you, Chair, none.
Thank you, and Commissioner Chuon, any announcements?
No announcements.
Okay, Commissioner Oblaza, any announcements? Hearing none. And Commissioner Belong, any announcements?
None at all.
Thank you, and Commissioner Albana, any announcements?
None at all.
Okay, seeing none, and Staff, any announcements, please?
Thank you, Chair, I don't have any particular announcements tonight, just nice to see everybody and glad that we can still continue to meet in spite of circumstances. Look forward to a good meeting tonight.
Well, thank you, thank you, a big round of thank you to Staff and also the IT Staff for facilitating this this evening's virtual meeting, we appreciate it. And the the next agenda item is public forum. Those interested may address the Planning Commission in writing on any subject not on tonight's agenda. Commenters may type their name and city of residence for the record. And the remarks read aloud will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments submitted via online form form will be read aloud by the Secretary. As an item not listed on the agenda, no response is required from the City Staff or the Planning Commission, and no action can be taken. Planning Commission may instruct Staff to place the item on the future meeting agenda. So Staff, any any public forum items? Hearing none?
None. None for any agen- un-agendized, I mean, agendized items?
So there's no any public forum items, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, and the next agenda item is approval of minutes. And Staff, any changes to the to the minutes for the May thirteenth, the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty Plan Commission Meeting?
I have, um, I had two changes to the minutes. I, um, for the approval of minutes for February twenty sixth, I incorrectly put in Vice Chair Belong. It should be Commissioner Belong for both the motion of the approval of minutes for February twenty sixth and March eleven.
Okay, and yet Commissioners, any other changes to the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, I may have a motion with the amendment.
Move to approve the minutes of May twenty, oh, of May thirteenth.
Second.
Read the changes.
Sorry, second.
Okay. I'll go ahead and do a roll call on the on the approvals, Vice Chair.
Aye.
Commissioner Chua.
Aye.
Commissioner Chuon.
Aye.
Commissioner Oblaza. Okay, and Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
And Chair's eye as well, so we have six eyes and one one absentee. Thank you, and going on to the public hearing item thereafter. And so the first item for the public hearing this evening is the Chick-fil-A Restaurant. The app, the this particular item is not currently on the on the agenda, and the applicant has requested this item to be continued until June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty. Staff?
And no other comments on that item, we can go to item number two, like.
Just as formality, maybe we could, let's just make a motion to continue the public hearing for this item to a date certain of June twenty four, two thousand and twenty.
I'd like to make a motion to continue item number one, the Chick-fil-A Restaurant, to June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and is that Commissioner Belong seconded, I assume?
Yes.
Good, thank you, so I'll go down the for the roll call, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Aye.
Commissioner Chua.
Aye.
Commissioner Chuon. Commissioner Chuon. We'll circle back to Commissioner Chuon.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, thank you, and Commissioner Oblaza. Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
And Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Chair's eye as well, thank you, and we have a six eyes and one one absentee. And Staff, on the next public hearing item, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the next item is a mobile food service area with also commonly known as a food truck park. This is a request for a site development permit and a conditional use permit for that use. It's located in a neighborhood commercial zoning district. We have our Assistant Planner Avery Stark here to present the staff report and answer any questions.
All right, good evening, Chair Tao, Commissioners, fellow staff and residents of Milpitas. My name is Avery Stark and I am an Assistant Planner with the City of Milpitas. Next. The application you have in front of you this evening is a site development and conditional use permit to develop a vacant lot into a mobile food service area, otherwise known as and will be referred to as a food truck park, including a new parking lot, module food sales and prep containers, landscaping, fencing, lights and utilities. The conditional use permit is required for the mobile food service area, food truck park, so the Planning Commission, at its discretion, can define a move of food truck park as another use in the commercial regulations of the zoning ordinance and determine this use to be similar in nature to a restaurant that is principally permitted with outdoor seating. Next. This map shows the general location of the site in relation to the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed project site is located north of Calaveras Boulevard, two thirty seven, east of northbound, east of the northbound on-ramp to Interstate I eighty, west along South Abbott Avenue. Click. The site is bound by a multi-tenant commercial building to the west, a gas station to the south and a convenience store to the north. The project site is located within the neighborhood commercial C one zoning district within the Milpitas Midtown Specific Plan Area. The zoning designation allows for the development of a new main building, parking lot and related site improvements with the approval of a site development permit and a food truck park with the approval of a conditional use permit. Next. This is the site plan for the proposed development of the food truck park. The site is approximately point three five acres and located at twenty five South Abbott Avenue. The proposal includes three permanent module containers for vendor food sales and three rentable parking spaces for food truck vendors who will rotate into the parking spaces daily. The applicant will operate the food truck park from nine AM to ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, and from nine AM to midnight Friday and Saturday. An onsite attendant will be staffed at all hours of operation to monitor the parking, the matter of the parking lot, ensure overall customer safety, pick up trash and maintain the restrooms. The onsite attendant will also assist in loading and unloading logistics for food trucks and the module containers vendors to and from the site. The site features an ADA compliant restroom, seventeen onsite parking spaces, a storage shed. Customer seating is located under the trellis dining area near the building at the front of the property, furnished with tables and chairs for guests. An additional open dining area is located onsite at the rear of the property for guests with proximity to the ADA accessible parking area. All furniture will be secured each night with cables or moved into the storage shed onsite to prevent theft or vandalism. The applicant proposes to install new landscape, new landscaping at the vacant site with trees, shrubs and ground cover planted in areas along the north, east and western property lines and enclosed by a six-foot wooden fence on the south and north property lines and a forty-two-inch metal fence designed to match the primary buildings along South Abbott Avenue to the east. It is limited by pedestrian scale lighting near the food trucks, the containers on the long the parking lot to ensure visibility and customer safety. The applicant expects the to feature Indian, Chinese, Korean, Mediterranean and Italian cuisines to customers. Again, the food trucks will rotate regularly, it will not be parked permanently on the site. The three permanent module food sales prep containers will be limited to selling basic prepackaged concession foods such as water, frozen treats, non-perishable food items, as no food preparation or cooking will be permitted within those containers as they are not designed for commercial-grade kitchens. The site plan includes three dedicated parking spaces for food trucks adjacent to the primary module containers on the site as you enter to the left, and each space will be rented to a licensed Santa Clara County mobile food truck operator to provide service during business hours. They would also be required to get a Milpitas business license to conduct business. Alcohol service is not a consideration of the application at this time, but if the applicant may choose, they may return and submit a separate permit for onsite consumption of beer and alcohol as an established restaurant with takeout. An important condition to note, number thirty, outlines requirements for onsite waste management in conjunction with Milpitas sanitation. There will be onsite recycling, garbage, separate food scraps and compost options. The operator will be responsible for ensuring that the food truck vendors implement stormwater pollution prevention best practice management to ensure that nothing ends up in any of our utility or sewer drains that does not belong there. Next. The rendering on your screen is from an earlier iteration of the project and differs slightly from the final site plan. The final site plan provides space for three food trucks, this plan indicates two, and has a large open area at the rear of the restrooms. So this rendering just has a slight iteration in in comparison to the new site plans which were included in the packet. As shown in the digital rendering of the site, the proposed architectural style of the project establishes a clear, symmetrical and utilitarian design using straight lines via flat roofing, windows, canopies and a transition of materials and paint colors on the containers. The project also includes two video surveillance cameras to monitor the dining area at parking lots as required and conditioned by the Milpitas Police Department. The first surveillance camera is located on the wall of the first container and is facing towards like the parking lot and the under the pergola, and the second is located outside on the wall of the restroom facing the eating area. Next. And it's gone. IT, can you bring back the PowerPoint, please?
IT, would you please bring back the PowerPoint for the presentation?
On it, Chair, not sure what happened, hold on a second.
No problem, thank you. Can Staff continue the presentation without the?
Again, certainly. So as shown on Exhibit Six of the staff report, the project site has ingress and egress from South Abbott Avenue via an internal two-way driveway that heads northward into the site as indicated here in this red, this red box, click. The northbound property exit onto Valley View Way will be reserved for emergency access and solid waste vehicles only. The general public will not be permitted to enter or exit the site from this paved one-way drive aisle. Click. The site plan includes, oh, that was an extra click. There we go, the site plan includes seven removable bollards to allow access for those vehicles. The ingress, the egress is not through the adjacent gas station, it runs along the rear of the property, and we have confirmed the recorded easement with land development. The city's traffic engineer worked with staff and the applicant to address concerns for pedestrian safety into and throughout the property. The site plan includes an internal paved pathway for vehicle traffic for access to all onsite amenities, including the food trucks, dining and restroom areas. The applicant was not required to hire a traffic consultant because the permitted by right use based on the parking requirements of the Milpitas Municipal Code requires only fourteen spaces and the applicant provides three, so there is a surplus of three stalls onsite. It would be similar to, say, for example, if a new ice cream shop opened up with outdoor seating with a very, you know, non-int internal seating arrangement, everything would be outside. The the parking requirements would suggest that that the impact on the traffic is not considered to be significant, and because they meet the parking standard and exceed it, it further demonstrates that there's was not a need to hire for a traffic consultant to do any kind of study to mitigate any traffic that or any parking that was not met. There are eight on-street parking spaces with no residential frontage, with no residential frontage available on Abbott approximately two hundred and fifty feet north of the project driveway. In addition, twelve on-street parking spaces are available on Valley Way, a commercial cul-de-sac approximately a hundred and feet, a hundred and fifty feet south of the project site. No on-street parking is permitted along South Abbott Street frontage adjacent to the project. We did, what was, can we stay on that slide? Thank you. We did have an opportunity to speak to the city's traffic engineer and based on field reviews in the past, Abbott Avenue traffic is highly directional. In the morning, in the morning peak, the majority of traffic is southbound. Southbound traffic queue from Calaveras Boulevard typically extends to somewhere between Valley Way and Heath Street. There is no congestion on the northbound direction. In the evening, peak majority of traffic is northbound, but there is no traffic queue that extends across the project frontage. There is no congestion on the southbound direction. Next. These are the proposed development standards for the project. The proposed project conforms to the development standards required by the Neighborhood Commercial C one zoning district. This table demonstrates the project's consistency with these development standards. For a note, restaurants offering takeout services require parking spaces of two point five per seat for indoor or outdoor, which is the parking ratio we have used. And the Milpitas Municipal Code does not require that we calculate for staff when we review for parking for a restaurant for or for various uses. But the staff report does outline that the project does provide seventeen parking spaces, three of which will be dedicated to the onsite attendance. Next. Staff has made the findings in the affirmative to recommend approval for the project. Those findings are addressed in detail within the staff report. I would also like to take a moment to explain Attachment C, the city's department memorandums that were attached to the project staff report. And this is just to kind of help give some context to why they were included and and the purpose that they serve. So throughout the process of entitlement, which is really a feasibility analysis within the planning department, we use official memos to communicate questions, corrections, required project-specific conditions to the applicant. After each round of review has been completed, the application is either deemed complete or incomplete. And once an application has been deemed complete, we begin the process of drafting the conditions of approval, otherwise known as the COAs. These are found in the resolution. In this project's resolution, numbers number nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and pages nine through fourteen represent the conditions of the project that the project shall comply with. Some may be required prior to building permit submittal during the construction phases and after to ensure the project is developed and maintained in a way that it was approved. The entitlement is granting the developer the right to propose the use, the building or possible change in land use, and those conditions of approval are what hold them responsible. And so you see in the resolution that for certain of those attached memorandums I have listed that they've been issued and that they relate to the date and the memorandums that have been provided. And to note that they are in many ways the standards of building code, fire code, maybe construction requirements that have to be maintained during construction, things that maybe need to be maintained after construction. And all of those comment letters provide an approval with conditions, and those conditions are what needs to be followed in order to first gain approval of a building permit and then eventually the the final sign-off from the Building Planning Department and related departments. For example, the Building Department memo is an approval with a condition that will need to be met when the plans are submitted to the Building Department. It outlines project-specific requirements and general architectural comments for applicable codes that will need to be satisfied before a building permit can be issued. And again, each project will vary in the detail of the conditions of approval from departments, and they can be written into the resolution. As an example would be the Police Department and Land Development, or they can be included in the final approving memo from a department. So in some cases, the final approving memo is quite long and it is then attached to the to the staff report. So that's when we're talking about the the subject to the findings and conditions of approval, we're referring to the conditions that are written into the resolution and any attached memos or studies or related documents. Next. Two hundred and sixty-eight postcards were sent out to residents and property owners within a thousand feet of the project site. The project was noticed in the local paper. Staff have received, as of twenty-five minutes ago, six comments which have been included in the Planning Commission's packet and uploaded to the city's website. One general comment from the owner and management of Arco, which I responded to via phone call, three general comments in support of the project which were received in the prior to this meeting, and two comments not in support, which will be read allowed during the public comment portion of this meeting. Therefore, staff recommends the following actions. Open the public hearing to receive comments. Move to close the public hearing. Consider the exemption in accordance with CEQA and adopt Resolution Number twenty dash zero zero seven, approving site development permit number SD twenty zero zero five and conditional use permit number UP eighteen dash zero zero nine to allow the development of a new food truck park on a vacant three point four seven five acre lot at twenty-five South Abbott Avenue, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. This concludes staff summary of the project, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Staff. I'll go ahead, go down the line for Commissioners with any any questions you may have for the staff, Vice Chair. Any questions?
Um, can you come back to me? Is that, is that, is that possible? Can you, can you just circle, can you just circle back to me?
Sure, absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chua.
Oh.
Any comment?
Okay, sure, um, Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Um, when I reviewed this application, I really got excited because I think this is the first time that we're going to have this. And and I would like to ask a couple of questions. On your, on the site, site plan, can you, can somebody put it up, please? The site plan. I think it's the third or the fourth.
Fourth slide, yeah.
I think fourth. The other one.
Yeah.
Uh, so, well, this, this will do, this one. Okay, yeah, just to review back, the the permanent one, are those the yellow ones, I mean, the orange ones, are those the permanent ones?
Yes, the beige, the beige colored, there are three of them there, the food sales prep by the tenant. Those are the three permanent containers that will be onsite, correct?
So those are the ones that will house the prepackaged items.
Right, it'll be more of convenience food, yes, they are not, at this point, the applicant has not turned them into official commercial-grade kitchens, so they're not allowed to, say, prepare food within those containers, but like the sale of like a prepackaged food or, you know, a
Yes.
non-perishable item.
Water, water. Above that, above that would be, that would be the, what would that be?
That is an additional seating and dining area, so there's a, there's a trellis in the very beginning of the site as you enter with a number of tables and chairs, and then just beyond that, there's an additional seating area which is uncovered but is within close proximity to the ADA accessible parking and then is right outside of what becomes the restroom and the storage.
Good, tell me again how many total seating areas are there?
There'd be, I believe it's thirty-five total seats on the site.
Okay, so below the permanent fixture, the permanent one, that would be the one with the trellises, I think. What, what's in there, what's in there?
So underneath the trellis, there are six round tables or rectangular tables, one of them being an ADA accessible table that would be utilized for guests to sit and eat at after they've, you know, taken their food from the food truck or if they've, you know, to sit and have a bite before they continue on with their day. So both areas are seating areas. We we worked with the applicant to break up the seating a little bit to give the site a little bit more of a dynamic feel.
Yes, I I like the the general design, I really do. So, okay, so the what, the light blue ones, that would be the trucks, correct?
Those would be the food trucks, correct, those would be the rotating food trucks. And again, they would not be there overnight, they would load in during the day and then leave every evening.
Okay, the way this, the arrows pointing down.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no entry, well, I see, I see, you see what I'm trying to say? It's all the fourth one, one, two, three, four arrows going down, where did it come from?
So it's a, it's a two-way drive aisle, so cars enter from Abbott Avenue, they would then park, and then you'd be required to back up and return and exit again out the same entrance onto Abbott Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's just indicating a two-way, two-way tra- path of
Yeah, so it's just indicating a two-way, two-way tra- path of travel for vehicles.
Okay, so you mentioned there are no street parking.
There's no street parking directly in front of the project site, that is correct.
Right, and, and there, you mentioned there are fifteen, uh, uh, this, this ones that has one, two, three, four. Are those going to be fifteen? Is that what we're trying to say?
There are seventeen, there are seventeen parking spaces on the site. Fourteen more than required by the municipal code and two of which are, one of which is for ADA parking.
Okay, that, that looks really good. And, and those landscaping, that would be part of it, right?
Correct.
The green ones.
Yep, so the
I like, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the site is, is currently vacant. If you're aware of the site, if you had an opportunity to drive by it, it often has, depending on the season, high weeds or, you know, has, I've, I've seen it, you know, can be a little muddy. So this is really a wonderful opportunity, right? It's a full, full re-landscaping of the site, which includes trees, shrubberies, ground cover throughout it.
Right.
If I may intercept for one second, I think Planning Director has a comment.
Sure.
Oh, no, is my hand up? I don't have a comment.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Apologies.
I, 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 yes, I know from that, from what it is now and to this in the future is really, it's really good. On page five, Mr. Stark. I like, I like the conditions that the Milpitas Police did. You know, having installing insufficient lighting, installing illuminate the parking, parking lot, and also they're, they're very aware that after it closes at ten P M from nine to ten P M, there are all these conditions, one, two, three, four conditions address, address, addresses the fact that to make it safe, no, so I like that one. So thank you. Good job, Mr. Stark.
Thank you. Thank the Milpitas Police.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, overall, I like it. I like the project.
Appreciate it. Comments and questions? And Commissioner Chuan, any comments?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I do have some, some questions. So, you know, this is for Mr. Stark. Just, you know, while you're on this slide here, what, where's the restroom again on this one?
The restroom is located along the northern, sorry, the southern portion of the property. If you follow the, the arrows that lead towards the back, there's a two containers, two concrete containers. On the elevation, it's to the right. And on the overview, it's going to be in that back left-hand corner. It's going to say S T O is the storage. And then just to the left of that is the restroom and the door faces towards the fence.
Okay, all right, that's what I, I thought I just wanted confirmation around that. And then, you know, with regard to Attachment D, there were a couple, you know, so I noted on Attachment D, there were, looked like there was two comments. You had stated in there you had received a total of five comments. I see two in Attachment D.
More comments, yes, had been received from when we were able to get that first set uploaded. So I believe the secretary will read aloud those comments.
Okay. I just wondered, is, are they, maybe for the secretary, are they really long comments?
No, they're not particularly long comments. There were two comments that had voiced concerns and disapproval. Two comments that I believe had voiced approval of the site. I did receive one comment and a question from the Arco gas station owner. He had some logistical questions that I was able to resolve over the phone with him and direct him to this evening's meeting and the plans so he could take a look at what was being proposed next door.
Okay, and then with regard to the two comments that were not in the affirmative, what in particular were the concerns they had around that? Was it primarily around the traffic or?
There was, let's see, the, hey, we need to pull them up and we can, we can get to it. I know that one comment was from the adjacent management company of the, the shopping center to the west, east. There we go. And they had some concerns, you know, that, you know, that based on the current condition, given the pandemic that we are in that they've had to, you know, provide free rent or rent relief or reduce rent for their tenants. And it was their opinion that this would further exacerbate that issue and make it harder for them to, to, to keep their tenants. But I would say it's best that we read, that we have the secretary read that out loud so I don't misinterpret what that individual was saying. And then there was another gentleman who did have some concerns about traffic. He did mention the backup that he experiences along Calaveras from Abbott, maybe during peak traffic hours, for example. He expressed some concerns about trash and litter. But again, I think we can, we can read those into the record and that will best describe what he's talking about.
Okay, and, and then one, one last, I, we could probably read that after if it's okay with the, with the chair. Just the reason I'm asking for the three comments that were to be read or at least shown on the screen is because they weren't shown the Attachment D, so I just wanted it to be publicly least known and maybe if it can be read. And I had another question with regard to, one of your comments you had earlier with regard to the traffic. And you said that in the mornings, the traffic was primarily southbound. And I just wanted to know if, with regard to the northbound, because on Abbott, there's also a school, Spang- Spangler Elementary School. I was wondering if the traffic engineer or anything had brought that up as well? Or were there no concerns, you know, in the morning time for the schools?
Steve, I know you are on this call and I'd like to invite you if this is, you know, to be able to speak to that question.
You've chaired City Transportation and Traffic Manager. Given the food park opens at nine A M. and the school drop-off hour is before nine A M., I don't foresee any conflict with the drop-off and activity at this proposed project site.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all you hear. At this time, I don't have any further questions. Like I said, I just, you know, wanted to make sure that the comments, the, the public comments that were not shown on Attachment D, if it's possible to, you know, have those read, I'll leave it up to the discretion of the, the chair. And then I have one request just on my own, if this is to I T. Support. If, so on my, I'm listed as one of the attendees under my phone, Commissioner Bill Chuan's phone. If you don't mind unmuting that, I'm having a little bit of Wi-Fi issues there. That's why I just wanted to, you know, so I want to be able to switch between my computer and my phone. Thank you. That's all the questions and comments I had, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chuan, and Commissioner Blazza. Okay, doesn't sound like a, a Commissioner Blazza with us. Commissioner Belong, questions coming?
Yes, I had a few questions. Is there going to be any sales of alcohol on the property?
No, the application does not currently include any provisions for the sale of alcohol. They would have to come back for a separate permit, a minor conditional use permit to obtain an alcohol license to sell alcohol on premise.
So would somebody be able to purchase alcohol at the store next door and bring it over? And, I mean?
No, there'd be no, they'd be not even be allowed to consume alcohol onsite.
Okay. And then I, I know that there was going to be one attendant. Is, is that like a security guard or will there be a security onsite?
So I know that the, and this is probably a question we can direct to the applicant. I know that they will have one attendant onsite at all times and they'd be, you know, generally managing the site. And that would probably, that falls within their responsibility, general security, you know, keeping the site clean, free of debris, you know, ensuring logistics of when food trucks come in and out. It is to be a family-run and operated business that are maybe at times where there's going to be three full attendants onsite. So maybe during the load-in and loading out, there's going to be an additional attendant. But I would, that operational question, I would leave to the applicant so we can get clarification on, on what that person's role is.
Okay. I, I passed by the site over the weekend just to get more of a visual and, and see things out. And I've noticed there is a lot of transients, people hanging out, and, and that, that brings up my concern of, you know, people loitering on the property. And, you know, lack of security is kind of a concern for me. You know, being able, if it's supposed to be a family environment, you know, having a security guard on the side might make it a little bit more family-friendly. So, and, and then are the trucks held to the same standards as restaurants?
The trucks are held to the same standards that the Santa Clara County requires through a permitting process for mobile food vendors. So a commercial restaurant is still permitted by the county, but all food trucks are then licensed through that same agency. So they receive an annual certification, annual reviews where their trucks are inspected. So you would not be able to serve food if you are not a licensed and registered food truck vendor with the Santa Clara County.
So like restaurants, when you walk in, they have a, something from the health department stating that they're, you know, up to code and everything?
Yep, they have their little, their annual rating or their grade essentially that they, they're held to code. They would have their license, they would be, need to be visible. And, you know, it's always something, it's usually in the truck somewhere, you know, obviously where it doesn't get room under damage or sometimes it's inside the back of the door. But yes, each, we are conditioning the project to require that always any of the food vendors would need to be licensed. One, by the city to conduct business in the city of Milpitas, but first and foremost that they be licensed by the county as mobile food vendors.
And then one last question. How so, how are they going to determine what trucks are going to be onsite? Do they like lease certain time slots or is it going to be constantly rotating? Is it?
So that would be again, a question for the applicant, the kind of that, the logistics of the operation in terms of how long they would lease, the cost and those things did not, you know, don't directly pertain to the development application, but would be fantastic questions for Varun when he has a chance to respond.
Okay, that's all I have for now, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong, and Commissioner Albana. Commissioner Albana, any questions and comments?
Yes, I was just turning on my, thank you, thank you, Chair. Yes, actually, I had more questions also for the applicant, but for Mr. Stark, I was just wondering. I'm, I'm really more concerned on how people turn from the two-three-seven, the traffic. I'm more concerned than that, like, you know, pulling into the driveway and a busy, you know, like lunchtime. Because sometimes I frequent the, where I have to make a U-turn at the Spence and Heath, and even in crossing from the corner, commercial place of like Aurelius. The thing is, there are lots of cars coming from the two-three-seven, either from the freeway turning left to Abbott or from two-three-seven turning right to Abbott. So my question is basically, how would be the flow? How would be the traffic flow just to get into these food trucks?
So similar to the seven-eleven and the Arco gas station and the commercial centers along South Abbott to ninety-degree drive-in aisle. The project itself, because it is a principally permitted by use, permitted by right use as a restaurant and has satisfied the municipal code for its parking requirements onsite. And through the analysis that the traffic, city's traffic engineer has done in comparing the information that they have provided to us. There is, at this time, the impact on traffic is not considered to be a significant effect in which we would need to look broader outside of the site. Now, we obviously consider, you know, the, the context of the site and that street. And it's, you know, it's why we highlight that there are on-street parking spaces. And it's also why we ensured that our traffic engineer had an opportunity, you know, to, to review this plan and has worked with us as we have developed where that drive aisle is in relationship to the drive aisles of the existing, of the adjacent businesses. But it would, it would be like pulling into seven-eleven or pulling into the Arco gas station. It'd be a left-hand turn from the left lane, which there are two going south and north.
I see, yeah, well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Stark. No more other questions, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana.
Chair, can you hear me?
Is this Commissioner, uh, Blazza?
Yes, I just turned on my mic. I just wanted to check if you can hear me.
Okay, yes, I can hear you just fine. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one, just one question for the staff. Who will maintain the area? If you've already haven't discussed this yet.
So it'll be maintained by a site attendant that is required to be there during all hours of operation. And they would be again, responsible for trash pickup, you know, moving anything from any of the recycling or, or bins into the, the trash area, maintaining the restrooms, handling any of the logistics of, of food trucks coming in in the, in the morning before they start. And then, you know, ensuring that there's safety for them to leave in the evening and then securing the site throughout the day.
Okay, so I'm looking at the map right now. Let me just open this up. So the, actually, the location is between the Arco and the seven-eleven, correct? That empty, you can plot there?
It is, correct.
So this, this, so if I'm looking at the map, the same thing that you're looking at, going to the top of the map, turn towards the left. That is an exit to Valley Way, am I correct?
That, that is an exit to Valley Way. It is reserved for emergency vehicles and sanitation only. There are seven ballers that will be installed and removable for their use. And it will not be, the public, the general public does not, will not have access to that exit.
Right, and so what will happen is they'll come in through Abbott and then exit through Valley Way.
Yes, and it's, it's partially in part for any kind of maneuverability that a, a waste vehicle may need to make in order to make that angled turn and leave, or in the event that an emergency occurs onsite or an emergency vehicle would need to approach from the rear or from behind the property.
And will you be adding parking spaces to that area?
No, there's no parking spaces along that drive aisle onto Valley Way as it does not accommodate them.
There's not enough space?
There's not enough width to accommodate the requirement of the, it is a ten-foot wide drive aisle.
Okay, because what I'm seeing on the map is on the Valley Way road, it's a very big, like a V-shaped vacant area there.
So there's, yeah, so the V-shaped vacant area is a separate parcel. And the bottom of that parcel would basically align with the top of this map where you see the egress or the ingress, egress from the site. So it's, there is a, there's an easement that has been granted to the property owner to allow this kind of service road, emergency vehicle road to exist.
Okay, gotcha. So it'll just pass through the back of the Arco gas station?
Correct, it passes through behind the Arco gas station and right along to Valley View Way where it will have a standard curb detail to meet the cul-de-sac.
All right, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Circle back to Vice Chair.
I'm actually good. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And the Chair has a, a few questions here. First of all, I'm going, circling back to the site plan and the circulation plans, whichever one's fine. The back driveway that's showing in the, in the, in the background, that's a one-way traffic. It's showing right now, it looks like the pavement only goes out to, to where the gray, the gray coloration is. Is that, is the, the proposed construction going all the way out to the, to the curb?
It is, if you, if you advance two slides to number six. There is the civil detail that demonstrates that that drive aisle, a paved brick drive aisle, will extend all the way to Valley View Way with a standard curb detail.
Okay, all right. And is that going to be a blacktop or is it going, this is a, is it going to be a standard blacktop?
And it is, it's, it's a standard like a brick, a paver brick, pavers that will be installed. They are also installed along the parking aisles where you see the indication of the paver design stamped will be the same pavers that run along that drive.
Great, thank you. And with regards to the site, is it going to be the proposed development? It's going to be developed with onsite grease interceptors where, where all the, the wash, wash, the plumbing elements are connected to it?
Yes, so the plan does detail a grease receptor and all the utilities that will be installed onsite. That would be for the potential use if the site wanted to turn those containers into full kitchens. Then all of that infrastructure would be in place. So those are, those are detailed as a part of that plan.
So the, so the interceptors will be part of the quote-unquote the proposed, proposed plan, correct?
Correct, yes, as, as demonstrated on this plan there.
Thank you. And for the delivery onsite, are we going to see the, the large extended, extended, uh, delivery trucks? And, and if so, you know, how, how do they circulate for the site?
So the food trucks would, are you talking about food trucks? That would be the permanent?
We're talking about the large, the large full, the full-length forty footer.
Wouldn't anticipate a forty-foot semi needing to enter into the site. The, the containers themselves would be for a small number of convenient supplies, which would be, you know, manageable through a vehicle or a truck. But there, there's, the plan does not indicate that there would be service of a full- But there, there's, the plan does not indicate that there would be service of a full-rig semi truck.
Okay, and I'm looking at this, you know, this circulation plan here. So, basically, if hypothetically speaking, you know, all of the, the parking spots are taken and we don't have a hammerhead. You know, at the end of the, end of the drive where the, the seven ballers are. How do vehicles actually able to three-point turn their way back out?
Steve, are you able to answer that question? I know that there is, you know, because there is a surplus of parking and reasonably as a, as a takeout establishment, there's going to not be. You know, there'll be people that'll, some that'll be staying there longer and some that will be leaving over shorter periods of time. So, I'm not sure that that peak full seventeen spots at what time those would all be full. But I would let Steve answer that question if that drive aisle width allows for a reverse turn or if we need to consider something else.
Steve Chen, trying to answer your question right here. So, if the, the parking lot is full, there is some space near the trash enclosure near the back. Where they could potentially do the hammerhead turn. If that does not accommodate that, we could adjust the ballot location to push it further north on the page to allow that to happen.
Yeah, I, I would think that makes up, if, if this plan is, is approved. I think that that particular conditions will be a lot more conducive to a, to a turn. I don't, you know, I don't like to trust, trust folks making logical, illogical reads. And with regards to the, to the site attendants, to, to Mr. Stark. So, the site attendant essentially is, is operating on-site from the moment from nine o'clock in the morning to whatever the closing time is, is that, is that correct?
Correct, there would, there would always be a site attendant. So, it might be someone who shares the responsibilities with, you know, throughout the day, three site attendants are, you know, one, two, and three at, you know, during the peak time of dinner. Maybe there are three, but there would always be someone there. And presumably, you know, they're there before the site opens for business to receive trucks. And they're there a little after to ensure that the site is clean.
So, has, has the applicant ever discussed with you with regards to the, the operations? You know, for example, how, how do they, you know, food trucks by, by the standard path I know of, it's really kind of going by the social media. So that people know they're there and, and whatnot. So, does, has the, the operator shared what, what their thoughts are on that with staff?
Not to the fullest extent of like our full market or, or marketing plan. I would, I would say we do have the applicant on, on the phone call here for this meeting. I think that's a perfectly appropriate question for him to answer.
With regards to the, with regards to the side lighting. You know, we have a, a number of wall spouses as well as another twelve-foot pole lights. So, based on the, based on the, the the pole lights, you know, do we have enough of a spread pattern so that the, the site is well illuminated, you know? As, as, as that's been the intent.
Based on planning's review and the comments and review provided by the Milpitas Police Department, yes, they do believe that there is sufficient lighting to provide accurate security and illumination of the site.
Okay. The security cameras are too sufficient to, to cover the whole entire site with the level of details and the, and the dead, the dead, the dead angles that, that may, may exist?
Again, I would refer to the Milpitas Police Department's review and, and requirement of the installation of that, the monitoring and video surveillance. And they, they, the plan that they saw was for two, if there is a need to go back. And it's meant to first look at the entrance, you know, the, the one on the, the very first container would be looking at the trellis area and then out into the parking lot. And then the one on the rear, which is attached to the left-hand side of the restroom door before you make the turn. Would be facing towards the parking lot and a part of that eating area. So, based on their review, they did find that those two would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you. And any other, any other comments from commissioners? Before I bring the, bring the applicant in on the, on the action?
Yeah, Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair?
I'm gonna kind of add and support your idea of if, if this does get approved. One of the conditions should be to have sufficient space at the end of the driveway to turn around. If the parking lot is full, that does not include the space in front of a dumpster area. And I'm specific when I say the dumpster area just because a lot of the times, you know, you could have garbage in front of it or the doors could be open in preparation for Milpita sanitation to come empty them and the space will be taken up. And so, I just wanted to support that. I know we're not at any motions part of the discussion yet, but I just wanted to add support for that comment.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And so, like to go ahead, thank your staff for the presentation, highly appreciate it. And I'd like to open the floor to the, to the applicant if the applicant has a presentation.
Hi, Varun here, I'm the applicant here.
Thank you, Varun, and welcome to the, to the virtual meeting. So, do you have a presentation for the, for the commission, please?
So, I don't have a presentation like a PowerPoint, but I was, I was told if there's any questions I could answer.
Absolutely. Staff, would be appropriate for us to do the QA, Q and A session right now with re- Okay, Vice Chair, do you have any questions for the, for the applicant?
At the moment, no.
Okay, Commissioner Chu.
I just have one question, Chair. Yes, I, I just have one question. When is the projected completion?
So, we were, so once the plans are approved and everything is on paper, then I, I think this would take approximately like four months or five months is an approximate estimate as of this time. And while the permitting was in process, I had to talk to a few of the civil engineers, contractors, everyone. So, that was estimated time they have given.
Okay, so, so around the end of the year, correct?
That, that could be a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Chu, any, any questions for the, for the applicant?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blazza.
I don't have any questions. The project is really clear.
Thank you. And Commissioner Blom?
Yes, so we'll just go back to the, the whole one attendant. So, the one attendant, I mean, is it just one person? It's, they're going to be there from open to close Monday through Sunday?
That is the plan as of now, but if needed, there, there could be always a possibility to add another one. But if you look at the food trucks, they would be having their own attendants and their own people. So, just to support them, we are planning for one full-time attendant to take care of this project.
Was there ever any consideration of maybe having a security guard on-site?
Security guard, that's a good question. So, as, as I've been reading the comments, if, if it all if, if you think it's needed, I mean, it's, it's as per the day-to-day operations. If it is really needed, then we need to plan for it. But when I submitted, I didn't have that kind of consideration to start with.
And then, as far as the, the food truck rotation, I mean, how is, how are the trucks picked? And, and I'm just curious on that.
How does it trucks?
How are the trucks picked that are, that are going to be on-site and which days and things like that?
Okay, so, the, the intention is to get good fresh food on-site. And we would like to take honest reviews with all the customers who are walking in. So, there is, there would be some kind of survey for the customers. And based on the feedback, we would, we would try to introduce a new trucks as needed. Because there's a lot of wide variety of operations for, for this kind of business, right? And we know that in Bay Area, there are like a lot of trucks with great food. So, we will, we will introduce with three different cuisines. And we'll take more, what do you say, a feedback from the community. And based on it, we will, we'll plan for a rotation kind of a thing. So, if something is not working out, we, we will, we will always have a chance to bring in a, a new truck vendor to serve the community.
And then, as far as the three containers that will be serving packaged food, is that, those are three different operations?
So, the, the intention is to, so these containers, you have all the prepackaged food, like water, like sodas and basic stuff, which doesn't need, which the truck wouldn't carry most of the time. What we observed is the truck is focused on food and their specialties. And the customer needs some kind of drinks and water and like basic prepackaged food, like ice creams and stuff like that. So, based on our survey, that's, that's what we felt there's a need there. So, we, we planned such that we would put all the prepackaged stuff there and sell it.
So, so, but would each container be a separate business operation?
Oh, so basically, the, the so right now, we, we've divided such that there's, there is kind of a, a small opening internal. So, it could be one, it could be three, based on the demand and the thing. So, if there is a, if there is an interest in someone just looking at after the drinks, we'll just make sure only drinks are sold in that, that, that container. But to start with, we, we separated it out so that it has a clear definite, a difference in what we sell in each of those containers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blom and Commissioner Albana. Commissioner Albana, any, any comments and questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Albana, are you, are you with, are you there?
I chair.
Do you have any que- questions and comments for the, for the applicant?
Chair, this is IT. I think Commissioner Albana got lost connection or something. She's not in the meeting.
Okay, so, IT, would you kind, be kind enough to let me know if Commissioner Albana is coming back online? And Chair has some questions and whatnot, so we'll go ahead to get back to Commissioner Albana after my questions. Thank you. And so, Commissioner, so for the, for the applicant, thank you for the application. And first question here is for the restroom and the restroom security and that the use is a public or staff only? Can you address that, please?
So, is it for me?
Yes, Varun, this is the app, question for you, the applicant for the restrooms. So, the restrooms, is it, is it keyed or is it open during operational hours? And, and how, how do you maintain it? And how do you provide security for the, for the restroom as it is pretty much in the back, back of the complex?
Yeah, so basically, it is open for all the customers who would, who would walk in into the, into the premises. And generally, I've been observing a lot of Starbucks where they have a key code nowadays as a smart lock. Where you can provide the smart lock to the customers, they can punch in and use the premises. And it is ADA compliant and we have an option to change if it all, change the code if it all needed at, on a regular basis. And there will be lighting, there will be a security camera. So, I think we, we kind of have a surveillance of what's going on in that part of area. So, I hope that, that's about it. I mean, it's, it's, it's well-meant. I've been planning to maintain it really clean and nice. Because there will be customers, there will be kids and all, all, all these families who, whom I'm assuming they'll be coming into the, into the premises. So, we'll make sure that is maintained very well.
Okay, so the, so that the attendant is also, one of the attendance duties is also making sure the sanitation and the order and that the products is supplied in the restroom, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Chair, really quick, I, I would just like to point out that Commissioner Albana is back in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Now, Commissioner Albana, do you have any questions for the, for the applicant?
Yes, I had a few. Sorry about that. I lost my internet connection, so.
Welcome back and please.
I'm sorry, so I missed a lot, so what you were commenting. So, to the applicant, I was just gonna ask, what, what has been your vision? Like to have a, it is beautiful, but what the, your vision for a family food truck park? Because I would, I would like to see a family, it being a family-oriented. So, the thing that I'm more concerned is the security, well light, it's well lit and the security. Because if there should be something that happens, it's an easy access to the freeway for somebody who's who, you know, who's not compliant or who's, you know, does something. What is the, what is the vision for this long-term, like a family food truck park?
Yeah, so, it's absolutely a good question and that's, that's my motivation to, for this application also. Basically, food, food industry has been constantly evolving. And there's, there's new requirements for the customers. So, whenever, it, it, it actually came out of my own interest, like every weekend I used to go for any of these restaurants. And I felt there is something missing with, as a part of experience, like, like if I go to a same restaurant, I pretty much have my, that menu in my mind. So, I always wanted an experience where the, it's near to my home and where they are rotating cuisines. Where if I don't like something, if the community doesn't like it, there could be a chance to replace that whole cuisine and make sure a new food menu is introduced on a constant basis as needed to the community. So, it, it actually came out of my own experience. And then, then I felt if, if I'm taking my kids outdoor and in an indoor restaurant, they're like stuck to, to, to a certain environment, right? Week after week, if, if you're going for a favorite restaurant. But here, you're going to the same place, but you're getting a different food as needed based on the feedback we receive. So, it, it's kind of a, a unique experience we want to create. And in that unique experience, I, I kind of talked to a lot of food truck people. And most of them, they actually park in some gas stations right next to the road where there, there is no safety. There's no great parking or something like that. And when I, when I asked this, when I projected this idea, people were so excited that they have a chance to actually get into a restaurant-like environment and serve the community. So, that, that whole thing came together. And it's, it's like constant feedback that I'm receiving from various people. And the, the thought of, that the thought is going on on a very positive note than being a negative. So, that's been going on for the last couple of years. And every, every person I talk to, they're like, oh, wow. They've never experienced in South Bay, they've never experienced a, a restaurant-like feeling where there's a rotation of different food cuisines with, with a family atmosphere. So, everything is coming together is what my motivation is and vision is. We couldn't hear.
Commissioner Albana, any, any other questions?
Oh, I forgot to unmute. Yeah, well, that was, that's a good idea to rotate also the, the trucks. Because then you have different flavors of different, you know, dishes of different communities. But if we, we, we concentrate on making it really family-oriented, safe. And improving the, the location, that would be great. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Commissioner Albana, and the, the questions will come back to the Chair. To the applicant, the three containers where you're, you're noting that, you know, these are sort of sales for the ancillary items. Are the, are the food items staying within the, the containers overnight? Or they, are they coming in and out every day?
So, right now, we are planning to serve all the water and soda. So, I, I'm assuming there will be a fridge and it will stay in, in the containers overnight.
Okay, so you don't have any perishable foods within the containers themselves overnight, right?
And not really. Uh not really.
Is it, is it, I'm sorry, uh not really, that means a yes or or no?
We will not have any perishable foods in the country, not right.
Um have you operated any other concepts that's uh the same or very, very similar to what you're proposing here before us this evening?
Uh uh no.
Okay, and uh we're circling back to your um to to discussions about the the trucks that's on site. So your agreements with the food trucks, is that based on the daily basis or on weekly or monthly? How how does that, how does that work? So that allows the uh allows you as the operator the flexibility?
Uh so we 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 will start with monthly, uh uh like a a space rent. And then uh based on the business and their uh interest in staying for a long term, we'll we'll continue. If if they have other commitments in some other food truck parks similar to this, then uh we we will uh we will have to work with some somebody else. So to start with, it is a monthly uh 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 monthly idea where we rent the space and then they will do the business, we will support their their cuisines. Uh but uh I'm assuming if if there is a a a space left, then we'll introduce a a new cuisine uh whenever is needed.
So your your uh food trucks will carry insurance for their operation and you're carrying insurance for the site, is that correct?
That is right.
Okay, um how do you advertise? So so you know, say like the local residents or the, you know, other residents, how do we know? Do you use social media blast or you manage social media uh so that folks know?
Yes, we we are planning for social media, then uh we are planning some coupons or something where uh it it kind of attracts uh the the community uh on a regular basis. And then uh we have radio, which is very popular nowadays and uh not nowadays, it's been always popular, so radio has been a very good advertising uh platform. Uh but yeah, we we are depending on multiple uh sources uh to advertise this uh concept.
Okay, so certainly back to one of the Commissioner Blaz's earlier questions about security and site attendance. Do you think though, you know, you current current concept of one attendant, do you think that that one person uh operating from opening to close uh uh is a realistic sort of a projection?
There would be one attendant who is a paid attendant and then it's a family-owned business. So one of my family member is, I'm assuming that they'll be here uh at certain times. But there'll be one dedicated attendant we'll be setting up. So we I have a large family here in uh here, so my uh one of my family members should be taking care of it.
Okay.
I I don't want to call them as attendant, but there's a presence there.
All right, thank you. And uh uh that that's questions, that's all the questions for the chair. Any other questions from commissioners?
I have a quick question.
Please.
Um to the applicant, will you be selling your own food?
Uh no, I am not a restaurateur, I'm only uh uh managing the whole project uh itself, I'm not selling anything.
But you will be selling beverages?
Uh be uh, yeah, not food, but beverages, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um Chair, I have one one quick question. Um so did I hear this right, that you'll have one person who will be working from nine AM to ten PM? Like one one person for that entire shift?
Oh, the there there are two things here, like we, I need to make sure I'm aligned with the with the labor laws. So uh the the intention is for all those working hours, there will be one attendant at least. So it could, uh so the labor laws is that there's overtime after eight hours and all this, so we have to comply on that. So but at at one point of time, there will be one attendant.
Okay, so you're you're not saying there's gonna be one specific person there from eight AM or nine AM to ten PM, you're saying there will always be a staff member present? And you'll have a schedule of people who will come in? And so uh I wanted to double check, because earlier you said there'll be one full-time person. So I just wanted to make sure like you could do a full-time and part-time, two full-time and you'll however you want to structure it. Um I just want to make sure you didn't mean that there's gonna be one staff member who's gonna pull like a sixteen-hour shift or something.
No, no, I I I it's it's not practically possible, so.
Okay, okay, that was my one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, commissioners.
Can I just clarify, Chair?
Please.
Uh to the applicant, so you will actually have two people present every day uh for your operations, one in the morning, one in an first eight-hour shift and another for a second eight-hour shift, am I correct?
That is right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um see no other questions, this is a public hearing. And uh so um uh would like to open the to the public hearing segment and uh uh sec- uh recording secretary, I understand there's some public comments um at this point.
Yes, we have a few, so I'll start now. These are the ones that were not um included in the online packet under a public comment. This uh comment is from Gooch Patel, three twenty-six Commercial Street. His comment is, I support the food truck park on Abbott Ave. It will be a great unique addition to outdoor dining. Another public comment we received is from Ummish Patel. He is located at three seven one zero zero Fremont Boulevard, Suite A. Such food truck park is so useful for food truck owners like me because right now, all the gas stations are charging a big amount and parking is an issue. Besides, with such such food truck park, it will be a hub for many different cuisine at the same place, which serves entire family need or groups eating out. I have a comment from Miss Mary Egan and it's addressed to Avery. Uh I manage Milpitas Center Sh- Milpitas Center Shopping Center across the street from this proposed project. We have five restaurant tenants in that center that are struggling to survive, including Pinoy Barbecue, Thai Ebot, Barani's, Milpitas Buffet and Mo- Mills Diner. Three are currently open for takeout and only two have been closed since this stay-at-home or order. All have been granted dramatic rent relief by the landlord. These restaurants cannot possibly compete with food trucks who have little or no rent to pay. It would be the death knell for these tenants. It would also become impossible for us to rent to any future restaurant tenants when they can go across the street and pay no rent. Let's not kick these restaurant tenants when they're when they are down. We ask for you to consider our comments and the effect it will have on existing tenants in our center. Thank you, Mary. And then I have another one, and we just received another one, so I have a comment. It's also from Miss Mary Egan that was sent today. The food truck park would severely impact our restaurant tenants at Milpitas Center across the street. This provides an unfair advantage to the food trucks, our tenants are barely scraping by since the shelter-in-place order. This will be a disaster for the current tenants in our center, we strongly disapprove of this project. And we just received one from Ervish Kumar Meta, uh P O Box three six two one one six in Milpitas. To Milpitas Planning Commission and members, I would like Milpitas Planning Commission member to consider that the food truck should be having site placement and allotment with specific business zoning. Also to consider that the food truck also have appropriate US Food and Drug Department certifications. Thanks, Ervish Meta. And those are our comments received.
Thank you, Recording Secretary, appreciate it.
As you have one more comment to read into the record, there's one from Mark. It is the last comment in the inbox for the planning meeting.
That one was included with the.
Oh, that was included in the one, never mind, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Clarify, may we may want to just clarify that that of those co- those additional comments that were received were included in the packet, correct? Um this, just just in case anybody who sent those other comments is watching, they they will understand that the commissioners received those in writing.
Yes. And all of these will be posted, all comments received for this project will be posted to the website.
Thank you, and uh um so this being the public hearing and we have no further uh public speakers or or uh public comment items, I do have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you, and our second?
Second.
Okay, good, well, uh so I'm gonna go down the line and do uh so to close the public hearing, Vice Chair?
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Chua?
Aye.
Commissioner Chuan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blazza?
Aye.
Commissioner Belong?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Chair, aye, so we have seven, seven ayes and we're here uh hereby closing the uh uh the public hearing. So commissioners, comments and the and the uh your thoughts? And the, so I'll start with the uh Vice Chair.
Um I would like to see, uh as I mentioned before, um if a motion is made, I would like to see a condition that there is sufficient space at the end of the driveway to make a U-turn. Um sufficient space, not just for a tiny smart car, but a SUV if if needed. Um that does not include the space in front of the trash enclosure.
Thank you, Vice Chair, uh Commissioner Chua?
Um I I would like to address the concern of Miss Egan. Uh as the planning commission, we unfortunately, we we do not uh look at the financial side of it. And we understand and empathize with the struggles of our businesses currently. We we do lend use, so although we feel for the applicant, I mean, we feel for the comment, I do feel for the comment. Unfortunately, as the commission, we speak with with land use. Um another comment that I have is is the conversation between Commissioner Albana and Mr. Garani reminded me, because I was looking, I said, do we have anything similar in Milpitas? That is uh like a food truck? And I and I thought about it and it's the um um Foster Freeze. Foster Freeze is is a truck and there are different uh and parking and you order the food there. I don't know, anybody is familiar, it's on Main Street, oh, it's on Abbott. And I think this food truck uh site is an upgrade to that. And and I do welcome this this business to Milpitas. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chua, um and Commissioner Chuan?
Uh I don't have any comments.
Thank you, and Commissioner Blazza?
Um yeah, I have two comments. Actually, we we do have food trucks, actual food trucks in Milpitas. One is on Able, um I'm not sure what court, um where the uh service station is, right beside the Foster Freeze. There is one food truck there and it's there, it's been there for some time, I think it's an Indian food truck. And there's another Indian food truck on uh Main Street um close to the uh pet store across the the tire supply. There is another food truck there, so we do have food trucks in Milpitas. And I remember in the past, we did have food trucks coming in. And I know that there is a Facebook page where food truckers are all there and that people who love to eat uh for from food trucks um uh go to that uh Facebook page. So I don't really see any problem with putting up the food truck across um um the uh areas uh across the street. So um that's just my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong?
Uh yes, to to piggyback on Vice Chair uh Alcorn's. Uh if if a motion is made, I'd like to see the, you know, the turnabout uh uh made as well. Um m- my concern is is just the being a family-oriented site. Uh I I just believe that there's a lack of security uh for the site. Um and I mean, I'd like to see at least no loitering signs posted or something of that nature. Uh as I mean, I I'd really like to see a security guard on the side as well, um but that's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana.
Uh yes, I was also gonna say that same comment. If um the applicant would uh consider it, aside from having um you know, a shifting off with it to people, it would be always best to always have like a security guard for security. Because people always look at the authority behind the person and will always, you know, um that's also like a a second backup, you know, somebody who's there like an attendant for the shift uh for another eight-hour shift. And then a uh a security guard would would really make uh would really just enhance it. You know, and provide that that the uh the comfort for families who come there. Yeah, if we could, if we could incorporate that and if the applicant will consider that, that would be good.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Albana. And uh as a chair, I've got a lot of cons- concerns with regards to the to the to the site. I think we're circling back to this as a sort of planning process, you know, of the we have a a fairly constrictive site, you know, on for this particular site here. And uh you know, the the advertising is social media and the and of the food, the food trucks. Um how how the the sort of the folks, if it's a good food trucks, which we, you know, we always like to see. You know, you can have a a fairly large surge of of traffic and also the the uses, um you know, from the from the users generally, it's kind of bunched up as a as a one uh you know, in a short period of time, kind of bunch up. Um you know, I do see traffic, you know, probably still have a fairly significant in significant impact. You know, during the during the the, you know, the the peak hours. You know, I've observed the, you know, couple locations, you know, one is at the Milpitas Town Center uh where, you know, at one point there was a other uh a con- congregation of four, four or five uh illegally food trucks illegally using the site without a landlord consent. I mean, we have about, you know, twenty to thirty cars just kind of parked there and and you know, for extended period of time, you know, for folks, you know, that are that were enjoying. You know, it's it's not a, you know, concept by itself, I'm perfectly great with it. You know, I think this will really add a lot to the Milpitas food scene, as we always are looking forward to good food, you know. I think it's really the the con- marrying of the concept, the site and the and what's around it. And uh and I think, you know, when we add the three together, I have some significant concerns, you know, because of the the parking. If this particular concept is landing at the Milpitas uh Town Center, I am perfectly happy. And let's say, let's let's have a go at it and then let's get a motion on the floor. But I think, you know, from this this particular uh stamp, this particular park standpoint, you know, we have an operator that has not operated, um you know, the similar concept before. And also, we, you know, that's, it's it's fine, but however, you know, the site is fairly constrained. And then we, you know, we have two-way traffics and the and also it it's a human nature. When when you when you pulled in, you know, if this is a s- an operational site, if if I were to pull in and I see there's a line forming, I would ask my companion, you know, to go stand in line, go grab the food and I'll stop the car, let let him or her out, and then I'll go go find parking. And the parking is a fair, even though we're we're technically meeting this, but we're not, you know, quote unquote. Um it's a fairly constrained site. And if we have two two cars that cannot pass each other, we have a we have a somewhat of a situation. You know, food trucks, you know, by by the virtue of the uh um the fact that you know, if a if a food truck is not performing well, I'm sure that, you know, a a operator would 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 invite them off the site and bring them, bring another site, another food truck that's more more popular and that generates a traffic and the and the return for the for the operators at at some point. You know, so pretty much you're you're looking at grand opening traffics more often than not, you know, for for this type of food food operations. You know, I, you know, I have, like I said, I have personally, I have absolutely no concern with the food truck concept, you know. I think it's marrying the food truck concept and that the location and the neighborhood. And how how do we, how do we manage the 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 three being into one into one pot? And that's what, you know, that's what I'm having some significant concerns with. So that's all my comment, thank you. So um do I have a? So, um, do I have a uh do I have a motion on on this item?
Mister Chair.
You'll come, comment.
Mister Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Mister Chair.
Commissioner Chuah, please.
Yes, before we do a motion, can I, can we hear from Mister Chan, Steve Chan? The traffic uh, our traffic engineer to to address the some of your concerns regarding traffic?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Chuah. And and then Mister Chan?
Uh, this is Steve Chan. So uh, we based on us, based our assessment on the project, based on the applicant's information. Uh, we don't uh, you know, project the traffic condition, worst-case scenario of of a very successful food truck. At this location, uh, information is strictly from the applicant. Uh, again, thi- this is typical of uh other businesses throughout the city. So uh, we're using that standard and based on that standard of uh assessment. Uh, we don't foresee uh the traffic condition being significantly bad. Uh, of course, worst-case scenario, as you uh mentioned, uh Chair, that could happen, but uh we didn't assess it uh based on the worst-case scenario.
Thank you, Mister Chan. We appreciate your comments. And Commissioner uh Chuah, uh Chuah, does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, thank you. And I'm now, if there are no other questions, I will go ahead and make a motion if if that's okay with the Chair.
Please.
Move to. Move to approve the consideration, exemptions in accordance with the CEQA. And adopt resolution number twenty dash zero zero seven. Approving site development permit number SD twenty dash zero zero five. And conditional use permit number UP one eight dash zero 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 nine. To allow the development of a new food truck park on a vacant uh point three four seven acre lot. At twenty-five South Abbott Avenue, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. With an additional condition of sufficient space for a turnabout or a U-turn. Enough space for bigger cars. This is, I think, from Commissioner Alcorn. And also, I would like, not as a condition, but a request. From several commissioners, I think Commissioner Albana, Commissioner Blazza, Commissioner Belong. To to have a security guard in addition to one attendant. Hmm, that's it?
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, and I'm gonna go down the line and do it, do the roll call on the vote. Uh, Vice Chair Alcorn.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chuah.
Aye.
Commissioner Chuan.
Aye.
Commissioner Blazza.
Aye.
Commissioner Belong.
Uh, nay.
Okay, Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Okay, the chair is a nay. So the motion passes uh five-two and congratulations to the to the applicant. And so, uh, with earlier said, uh during the uh the the first part of the meeting. Um, you know, we're gonna go ahead to uh do a two-minute recess and we'll come back uh here at uh eight thirty-six. And uh just, we hope all the commissioners will be well hydrated at that at that point. Thank you. And we'll just go ahead to recess for two minutes at this point. Thank you. Okay, so it looks like we're back back in session and thank you everyone for your uh for two minutes. I hope everyone had a chance to uh. Get hydration in and uh uh staff, uh the next hearing item. Uh, Planning Director. So we'll wait for uh Planning Director Thomas uh return. Thank you.
All right, went downstairs and thank you, just back.
Welcome back. Thank you, and uh the the next item, please.
Thank you. This is our item number three under public hearings. Excuse me. It's a time extension for a previously approved project. In this case, it's a site development permit and a continue use permit for an mini storage. Um, down on Montague and Watson Court. We have our associate planner, Lilian Van Waal, here to present the staff report.
You can go back to the title slide, please. Thank you, uh Planning Director Thomas, and good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. As mentioned, the item before you tonight is a request for a time extension for the redevelopment of the public storage facility. Next slide, please. Um, and so the application is a request for a one-time twenty-four-month time extension. For a phase construction plan of uh one five-story self-storage building. And one four-story self-storage building totaling four hundred and fifty-six hundred thousand square feet. Located at sixteen hundred Watson Court. A little bit of background on the original entitlement, it included approvals for a site development permit. Amendment to modify the original site development permit to remove one building at sixteen oh one Watson Court. And construct two buildings on sixteen hundred Watson Court. And a conditional use permit amendment to modify the original conditional use permit to allow self-storage use. And an increase in the floor area ratio, also known as FAR, from point four to two point one two. On a five-acre site. The self-storage building located at ten eighty Peckton Court that you can see now. Was completed in twenty fifteen and the city issued a certificate of occupancy. For the previously approved entitlements. At present, the public storage um tenant has applied for building permits for phase one. At sixteen hundred Watson Court, but will not complete the construction of the foundation. As required by the zoning ordinance prior to the entitlement expiration on July eleventh, twenty twenty. And so the applicant has applied for the time extension that is allowed. Um, per the Milpitas Municipal Code and if approved, the approval entitlements would extend twenty-four months. Or until May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. There will be no changes to the scope or design of the project associated with this entitlement request. Next slide, please. Here we see the satellite view of sixteen hundred Watson Court outlined in red. It is located south of Montague Expressway at its intersection with Watson Court. And located west of Interstate six eighty. Next slide, please. This map here demonstrates the project site zoning designation. The project is located in the heavy industrial zone and has a general plan designation of manufacturing and warehousing. And it is located east of the transit area-specific land boundary that's shown here in uh blue, the blue dot. Next slide, please. And so here is the overall site plan of the project. Uh, the project was previously approved by the planning commission on July eleventh, twenty eighteen. And um the yellow sort of beige um highlighted building is phase one. It's located on the front or northern side of the parcel while phase two or building T. Will be located at the southern end of the parcel. Next slide, please. So the first image is a rendering of building S facing Montague Expressway. Click. And then this uh is just showing the flat sort of elevation view of uh phase one or building S. Click. And then this will be building T, which uh will be behind uh building S along Watson Court. Next slide, please. And so the applicant shall abide and continue to comply with all previous city approvals, permits. And requirements related to the subject property, including but not limited to the original resolution. Resolution number eighteen dash zero zero six dated July eleventh, twenty eighteen. Unless explicitly superseded or revised by this permit. And so the original entitlement was approved prior to the adoption of the city's affordable housing ordinance. And the establishment of commercial linkage fees in twenty nineteen. And um so otherwise, the the project would only have to pay the public art fee. Um, as shown here, so it's one half of one percent of building construction costs. And so pursuant to the Milpitas Municipal Code, a request for an extension of time may be approved, conditionally approved. Or denied, and if approved, conditions may be added to the extension. And so a new condition of approval requiring compliance with the Affordable Housing Ordinance has now been added to the resolution. The project will be required to pay the commercial linkage fee based on the office area of the project. Which is approximately fifteen hundred square feet pursuant to the rate index set forth in resolution number eighty-eight fifty-two. And all of these fees will be paid at building permit issuance. Next slide, please. So a notice was published in the Milpitas Post, a sign was placed at the property and postcards were sent. To two hundred ninety-eight um residents and landowners and no comments have been received to date. Next slide, please. An extension of the approval of a project may be granted if the current findings for the specific type of permit. Are made by the decision-making authority. As the factual basis for the required findings and the previously approved use remain unchanged. Staff has confirmed that the project meets the current findings associated with the site development permit amendment. And conditional use permit amendment as set out in the Milpitas Municipal Code. And those findings have been discussed in the staff report and are addressed.
Keep it down.
Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the planning commission open and close the public hearing and they adopt resolution number twenty dash zero eleven. Approving an extension of time for site development permit amendment SD one seven dash zero zero one eight. And conditional use permit amendment UP one seven dash zero zero one three for twenty-four months. At sixteen hundred Watson Court. This concludes staff summary of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Van Waal. Appreciate your time. And uh, so I'm gonna go reverse order on the commission uh commissioners. So uh with any commissioner questions for the staff, uh so Commissioner Albana, do you have any questions for the for the staff?
Uh, no, I don't have any question.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana. Commissioner Belong, any questions?
Uh, what what was the reason for the the delay? I mean, they didn't anticipate. I mean, why, why are they looking for the extension?
So they've applied for their building permits, but they won't complete the foundation in time. Um, which is required for uh in order to vest uh any sort of entitlement.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Commissioner Blazza.
I have no questions at the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Chuan.
Uh, I have no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Chuah.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, as Ms. Ms. Ben- Benoit. Hi, and as you stated, I just wanna reiterate, there are no changes to the project, just that extension, right?
Correct, and then we added that condition of approval to pay the affordable housing linkage fee. That's the only change.
And I've I've always liked this project. Uh, two years ago, I I visited the site. And they explained to me the building S and T. And building T, I think, is the building S, is it? The fourth floor one? It's so modern and so so contemporary that it looks really, it upgrades the the ambience. Of that lot. And also, one of the things that I like about this project is, as you, as we all know, Montague is prone for traffic. Their office hours is really like eight-thirty in the morning, so it's get not really peak hours. And for people going into the storage, the facility is not gonna make. I would think that the their clientele would go on non-peak hours, which is very good. The, it's a good way of not clogging up Montague. That's why I like this project. Overall, I like the project and and I support the extension. Thank you.
Thank you, and the vice chair.
Commissioner Belong asked my question, so uh, thank you for that. Um, so that that was my only question and it was answered, so thank you.
Thank you, and uh, Ms. Van Waal, um, just wanna confirm that the, this particular extension is the one and only extension. That's available to the to the applicants, are correct?
Correct. So if this extension is approved and expires twenty-four months from now. Then they will have to reapply for a brand-new site development permit and conditional use permit and go before the planning commission for approvals once again.
Thank you, and uh, um, the the applicant is aware of that, uh, you know, where. The Milpitas is currently undertaking a ge- a general plan update as well as looking at the whole tax area. Um, for for possible future uh future uh boundary changes. Is the commit, uh, is the the applicant aware of that?
Yes, they are. And they're on the line as well, if you wanna ask them any questions.
Absolutely. And uh, um, in terms of the building codes, um, are there gonna be any building codes changed? From what their what their current building, you know, the building plans? You know, the building plans to the to the um. Based on extension, are there gonna be any uh building code upgrades that we which we're familiar with?
No, so they applied for their site improvement grading and building permits prior to the end of twenty nineteen. So the buildings will continue to be reviewed under the twenty sixteen building code.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your time. So um I assume the uh the applicant is uh available on. Uh with us on this virtual meeting. So, Ms. Miranda?
Yep. Uh, hi. My name is Brian Miranda, Regional Vice President for Public Storage. Here to answer any questions if you have them.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for joining us. And uh, I'd like to go uh. Go do a roll call down the uh to the commission to see if there's any questions for the applicant. Uh, vice chair, any questions?
No questions. I I just a really quick comment. I do appreciate the more modern design. The the closest public storage to me is the one. Off South Park Victoria uh next to the bowling alley. And um it's 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 slightly it's slightly it's it's getting there for being, you know, being dated and and such and. And so I appreciate the modern design of this new one. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chua?
Oh, I I just wanna thank the applicant for continuing to do this project, cuz I think it will add. It will add value to Milpitas uh and it will, the traffic issue for me is a big thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the Commissioner Chuan?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just a quick question for uh Mr. Miranda, just in terms of, you know, with the extension. Of, you know, you know, assuming that, you know, if you do get the extension. When do you anticipate uh your uh project to be completed?
Uh, presuming we'd start construction sometime uh later in the year. Um, it's about a twelve-month construction process. To build that five-story building in the front.
Okay, so then that'll be, that'll take it to, I mean, the the time date will be. If you start at the end of the year, then that'll be end of twenty twenty-two?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. Uh, that's all the questions I had, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blazza.
Uh, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't on the commission when the the project actually went up uh. Uh, for review. Is the site across the street uh part of the same? Ownership site? I mean, is it the same, considered the same site?
Uh, across which street?
So it'd be across Watson Court uh.
Yes, uh, we own all three of those along. Montague on that side. I didn't know if you meant across Montague cuz there's a new facility across the street there.
No, no, no.
We own all, we own all three of those facilities.
Is that a a future phase as well? Or is that gonna remain the way it is?
It it'll remain the way it is.
Okay.
For for the for the foreseeable future, we obviously come forward with any alternate development plans.
Okay. Uh, that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Albana?
Uh, no further questions. I I was able to read the reason why you needed the extension, but everything stays the same, right? We're just asking a one-time extension. So much.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana. And uh, the chair has a a couple of quick questions uh for Mr. Miranda. Um, in terms of your your construction timetable, when do you foresee uh? Uh, that will actually really kick in place?
Uh, assuming we had a permit later this year, I I would imagine we could start construction by the end of the year, as mentioned earlier. And it would take about twelve months to complete, so probably by the end of twenty twenty-two is when we're we're currently looking for an opening.
Okay, and uh with regards to the, you know, the the P S uh moniker and also the the color scheme. Has been there for for many, many, many years and it's iconic. Um, so. Uh, is there any future um uh plans, any? Let me rephrase that. Any plans in the in the works uh for any kind of a color coloration changes or or whatnot?
Color changes? No, that's that's pretty much the corporate. Corporate brand is the orange, the orange doors. Um, so I I don't see a change from that anytime.
Okay, ten forth. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, no further questions. And I appreciate your time and uh if you will stay with us. And uh, so this being the public hearing. Um, and I would like to open for the for the public um public comments section section of the adhering. Um, staff, are there any public comments?
Hey Chair, yes, we received one comment. It just came in from Uvish Kumar Metta. P O Box three six two one one six. His comment is to Milpita City Planning Commission members. I would like the planning commission members to consider that public storage sites be placed in different areas of Milpita City. As there is a, there is public storage availability in Northwood areas. So having public storage facility in different zoning area with business perspective. Would benefit the city. Also, change in structure be evaluated as city engineer. As well. Thanks, Uvish Metta. And that's all we have.
Well, thank you. And uh, so, commission, uh, with, that's the only public comment and uh. Um, do I, do I have a a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm going to move to.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to uh close public comment.
And I'll second that.
And uh, I'll go down, I'll go down the the line uh from uh for uh Commissioner uh Vice Chair Alcorn?
Uh, aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chua? Commissioner Chua, this is the for motion to, this is for closing the public hearing. Commissioner Chua? Okay, we'll come back to her. Commissioner Chuan?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Blazza?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Belong?
Aye.
And Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
And uh, Commissioner Chua, are you with us or unmuted? Okay, and so, and the the chair is also aye, so we have a a six ayes, a one abs- absentee. Um, so, so the uh the public hearing is closed. And so do I have a motion? At this point? Uh. Can I entertain the motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to stop resolution number uh twenty dash zero one one extending site development permit amendment. S D one seven dash zero zero one eight and ca- uh conditional use permit amendment. Uh, U P one seven dash zero zero one three for twenty-four months until May twenty-seventh. Uh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Belong motion and the second by the by the chair. So I'll go down, uh, I'll go down. Uh, for the vote and Commissioner uh Vice Chair?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chua? Okay, uh, Commissioner Chuan?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Blazza?
Aye.
Commissioner Belong?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
And uh, can, and the chair's aye as well, so we have six ayes.
Do you wanna go back to uh Evelyn Chua to see?
Commissioner Chua, Commissioner Chua, are you with us? Okay?
Commissioner Chua on the phone, what is your vote? Vote is aye.
Okay, so we have seven ayes. Well, thank you. With technology prevailed one more time. Well, thank you very much. And uh, um, well, Mr. Miranda, congratulations. Twenty-four months, let's go. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And uh, going to the the next agenda item and uh just give me one second here. Under new business, um. Under the new business and the in the previous meeting, virtual meeting, we have also. Discuss the possible, the possibility of starting the virtual meeting uh at the earlier hours in the seven o'clock. And the commissioners, uh, any, any uh, um, any additional comments and the. Um, and thoughts on this? I'll start this uh with Commissioner Albana uh on the earlier start time.
Uh, Chair, uh, what's our early start time, six o'clock?
Uh, Commission, uh, Planning Director, it was a six o'clock that was discussed time, is that correct?
That's what we brought up before, just uh, the Planning Manager Garner may be able to help me. I think for our next meeting. Uh, we will be in June, uh.
I think that, I think it's the twenty-fourth is gonna be our our first hearing in June. We only have the one item at this point with the the Chick-fil-A project, so. Unless we agree and and um. Start working on doing any kind of uh planning commissioner training with Barbara, um, we wouldn't. At this point, I don't think we would look to have a hearing for the first meeting in June.
Okay, and so uh i- if we, if the commission elects to go with an earlier start time, uh, do we have, uh, we don't have any uh. Uh, posting or any uh no no notice issues on the earlier start time? Um, so.
Oh, yeah, so, so it would be um, if if uh. Staff and the chair and the and the commission proposes to start earlier. It it would be agendized as a special meeting, so under the Brown Act, that would, the noticing would be uh twenty-four hours instead of seventy-two hours.
Okay, so, so uh, City Attorney, if I understand correctly, is that we're able to to. If the commission finds the finds an earlier start time and we we uh, we vote on it and agree to it. And then we're able to to proceed on to the next uh, uh, next meeting on June twenty-fourth, uh, based on the the new start time, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, just just a couple of points, uh, because this is a discussion item, there's no need to vote. It can just be. Uh, direction to staff to agendize uh the meeting, to a special meeting. Um, yeah, so that that would be my recommendation at this point. If 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 we were to think longer term and. And, you know, schedule meetings earlier, you know, the the that would require an amendment of the bylaws, which I don't think the commission wants at this point.
So, if we want to maintain the uh the uh earlier start time, if the commission uh uh as a large, a large approves. Then under every every meeting, at the end of the meeting, we will do the do the new item, go to the new. Uh, news, earlier start time, uh, as a special meeting for the succeeding meeting.
I think so. I think I think having having it as as a discussion. Like on an ongoing basis, if 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 the commission chooses, that's probably a way to keep it, to keep the public informed. That we're gonna have a meeting at an earlier start time. Otherwise, yeah, we would need to to amend the bylaws, which which would take longer.
Thank you, um, City Attorney and the Planning Director, please.
I was gonna say, i- if we do it that way, that gives us a little more flexibility for uh when we have three or four items, I'd well, two. Long, we have larger items on the agenda than we can, the meeting, the prior meeting, we can talk with the planning commission about. Possibly starting earlier. And that will give us enough time to do the the appropriate noticing.
Okay, and just for curiosity purposes on that, on our our next meeting to June twenty-fourth, are we getting a lot of public comments at this point?
We've received a fair amount of comments, not not a terrible amount. I I probably more than half a dozen. Comments. By extending that to the to June twenty-fourth, we've kept the online. Open and we may continue to receive additional comments.
Thank you. And uh, Ms. Garner, do, do you have a comment? I'm s- sorry, I I thought I heard your voice. The Planning Manager, do you have a comment?
Chair, I do not have a comment. That was, that was not me.
Okay, so we'll scratch you off from the sus- sus- suspect list. Thank you. So um. During a a commission discussion, so um, I'll start with the vice chair. Um, your thoughts on the next meeting being a a. Say technically a six o'clock start time, that'll be enough for the June twenty-fourth meeting. Would that, what would your thoughts?
Uh, I like the, I like the idea of um discussing it the the prior, the uh in the meeting prior. Uh, to the meeting, um, of starting early um and having that kind of flexibility. Uh, I I don't know, look, you know, as the attorney said, uh, doing it permanently would uh be a change in the bylaws, but the thing is, is like. You know, some of us have work and some of us have to travel from work to City Hall when we start meeting in person again. I don't think there's much issues with it when we're meeting remotely, but when we go back to City Hall, it might be hard for some of us to. Um, get to City Hall on time to start at six, so. Um, temporarily, while we meet remotely, I have no issues with uh start starting earlier. Especially if we have a discussion about it or or um. If uh, if it's emailed out and then the public is informed twenty-four hours in advance that we're going to be starting. Uh, at an early time, I I have no problem with that. I just don't want it to become a permanent. And I want, uh, I would like things to revert back to seven o'clock. Um, and have the expectation be that we will start at seven o'clock when we start meeting in person again.
Absolutely, so hypothetically.
Chair, if if I may comment also on that?
Absolutely, please.
I I just wanna point out that, yeah, it's good to keep the flexibility, but we. The bylaws still state that the meetings will be at seven P M, so. I mean, i- it can be an ongoing thing where we, you know, discuss about having a meeting at at an earlier time, but. You know, if it if it if it's a continuous thing where we're having the meetings, you know, an hour early. That that may require that we change the bylaws because, you know, we also don't wanna just have, keep discussing it and then having a meeting earlier, you know, that that's also not. Uh, that's not appropriate for for both the commission i- i- with respect to its bylaws and also to the public. Um, it, again, we can amend the bylaws in the future. To kind of give flexibility in that language, cuz cuz right now the language just says that the meetings. Shall be generally held at seven P M on the second and fourth Wednesdays, so. You know, we can add language that says that the city ma- uh, the Planning Director, you know, with with the. Concurrent of the chair can start, you know, the meetings at an earlier time based on the volume of business for a particular meeting. So that's the long-term solution. I think for now, yeah, it's fine to have a meeting an hour early in June and then, you know, a subsequent. Meeting in July that way, but if we're gonna continue to have it, you know, one hour earlier all the time, I would not, you know. That could be a problem without amending law.
Attorney, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, was the term generally uh added into the language to support the occasional early start? Uh, to a planning commission meeting?
Um, I mean, yeah, me read it again, so it says, the commission, planning commission meetings shall generally be held the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at seven P M. So, generally, I, yeah, I guess that that is in there to add some flexibility, but I I don't think it's, it's broad enough.
Yeah, it's it's not to, it's not to make it a normal thing. It's just uh, once in a blue moon or occasionally we can. Differ, you know, cuz sometimes we cancel a meeting or we push a meeting out a week or or something, and so it does give us a little bit of flexibility. When you first brought that up, it it just, it worried me a little bit because we have started early in the past and we have shifted meetings. And I wanted to make sure for our past meetings that we have not uh violated the bylaws or or did anything against the bylaws. But it it does, it does give us a little bit of flexibility uh in case we we get another very large item where we're expecting. Hours of public comment, we could even, if we're if we're all available, we could even start at five if we wanted to.
Right, right.
You know, for the occasional meeting. Um, and um, I I think we can kind of use. Um, as long as it's, we don't make it a normal thing for now, meeting remotely, I think we can kind of use the general. Um, flexibility given to us in the in the language, not abuse it, but use it uh while we're meeting remotely. Um, because it, we we also with the Brown Act, we do have a little bit of flexibility. Normally, what we're doing right now would not be allowed.
Right, right. And and we, and we wanna make sure because, you know, with with regular meetings, those are seventy-two hours in advance. Special meetings are technically twenty-four hours in advance, so if we're constantly doing special meetings. You know, the public's only gonna have twenty-four hour notice, so yeah, the, you know, tho- those special meetings are meant to be. You know, w- once in a while, not not subs- you know, not continuous.
W- would we be able to give direction to staff to, if if we do start early, even though the requirement is twenty-four hours? In advance uh to let the public know, we we let, we go ahead and go the full seventy-two hours, even though the requirement's only twenty-four?
The bylaws actually do state that uh. You know, it it is a policy of the commission to provide seventy-two hours for special meetings, but it's not, it's not a Brown Act violation if we.
Okay, okay.
If we posted, if we posted twenty-four hours in advance, so it's covered there.
Perfect, perfect. Love it.
If I can revert back to a a Planning Director, uh, Thomas. So I think the genesis of this discussion here, uh, really started with uh, with a multiple uh uh agenda, public hearing items. So, given uh, given the the June twenty-fourth proposed uh agenda with one public hearing item. Um, uh, so this probably doesn't quite fit into the 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 concept that we we were initially discussing. Am I correct on that one?
That's, yes, that's correct. That that item will just, will be a normal item. It will, it will probably take a little longer just because. The the commission will want to have plenty of discussion. But I I don't anticipate that a a longer meeting would be caused by excessive public comment on that particular item.
Absolutely, so um, I'll just go ahead, um, uh, open the floor to the, to. Absolutely. So, um, I'll just go ahead, um, uh, open the floor to the to the commissioners. Um, I think the 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 flavor right now is that, uh, we're looking at a June twenty-fourth meeting with a regular seven o'clock start time. Um, and, uh, any, any, uh, commissioner comments that want to add to the, uh, the prior discussion?
Here, I have a quick question.
Yes, please.
Um, so, um, may I ask, is there any public, uh, part of this meeting right now, or are they ever in our meetings, uh, when it's, um, remote?
Uh, I'll let City Attorney ha- uh, handle the particular question.
Um, or I can.
Yes.
Some public participant. Um, for for these types of meetings, just the, uh, key staff and the commission, uh, it's council meetings, the council and the city manager, for example, are considered, they're, uh, panelists in, uh, the Zoom lingo. So we have boxes and we, our faces are seen on the screen. And then if we have applicants or other staff or consultants who need to make comments, they are also invited. And then, um, as you see tonight, people will pop in and pop out depending on what the item is that's being discussed. And that that is all managed through the city manager's office according to the protocols that have been set up for these types of meetings. A lot of it is around security. You may have also read, sometimes these Zoom meetings have been, uh, Zoom bombed by people who were not invited to the meeting and they come in and they make trouble in the meeting. So to protect against that, the city has, um, established some protocols for these types of web meetings. Um, but the public, to answer your question, oh, the public is able to participate in three different ways. There's three different, they're either on YouTube or the city's website or on Face, on the city's Facebook site, and they can watch the live stream. And then as they're watching the live stream, that that's how they are able to find the uh, email and send the comment via email to the clerk, and then she can read those verbally.
Okay. So I'd like to recommend, um, I agree that if we have a heavy load, uh, for one particular meeting, we should start a little earlier. Um, but, you know, since June twenty-four, I understand that there will be only one um, um, subject for the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
We don't, we have to move the June twenty-sixth meeting, right? Earlier?
I'm sorry, Bla- uh, Commissioner Blazza.
Have to remove, we don't have to move the June twenty-fourth meeting earlier to six o'clock since we only have one project to discuss.
That's correct. We can maintain the seven o'clock, you know, uh, with one, with one, uh, public hearing item on the current, on the per- current projection.
Right. So I'd like to suggest, if we do have a heavy load for a particular meeting, then maybe we can discuss it and ask for an earlier meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comment. And, uh, any other commissioner comments? Okay, uh, seeing none. And, uh, with, uh, I think that, um, the comments from, uh, from Planning Director and City Attorney, um, and that the, I think, well, at this point, the commissioners sentiments, we'll keep it at, as an, as an option. If we have multiple public hearing items, then, uh, uh, prior to that, to the German of the prior, prior, um, prior meeting, and we'll, we'll make a, uh, uh, election, uh, if we want to go, go to virtual meeting to a six o'clock start, uh, but as a special meeting. Uh, otherwise, we'll maintain the seven o'clock start time as a, as the the bylaws so states.
I agree.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, uh, the next, uh, agenda item, uh, is the German. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Would you like to, would you like to say the legalese first?
Oh, please. Thank you very much. I I do appreciate your, your, uh, reminder. Thank you. So, "Any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission or department head, uh, to the city of Mopitas may appeal the decision, uh, to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with a city clerk within twelve calendar days of the date of said decision and and pay the required fee. This time limit, this time limit shall be strictly enforced." Thank you, Vice Chair for the reminder. And so we have a a German, uh, motion. Uh, the motion is by, by which commissioner? I'm sorry.
Me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Blazza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Albana. And, uh, so, uh, so, uh, I'll go down the road and, uh, for the call. So, Vice Chair?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chuah?
One.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Chuan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blazza?
Aye.
Commissioner Belong?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
And the Chair's aye. And so we have a a six ayes for the German. Well, uh, everyone, thank you very much for your time this evening for another wonderful virtual meeting, and we we appreciate your time. And thank you very much, staff, for your time as well.
Stay healthy, everyone.
You too. Thank you. Very much.
Night. God bless. Thank you. Thank you.